Thank you, welcome back. And this brings us to the Parks and Recreation Program, pages 165 through 193.
Thank you, Mayor. The activities that we are involved in in Parks and Recreation, obviously, we do administration, we do commission support. We work with through it with the facilities, we rent them out, we're there when the facilities are in use. We do after-school activities for all ages, we are, we do youth sports, preschool activities, spring, winter, summer camps, and we also work with outside agencies to bring other camps into our cities such as Lego, and this year we have the San Francisco Shakespeare Company that's providing a camp. We do adult sports, we do adult classes, senior classes, senior club support, and support's so important, I put it twice, senior drop-in center, community events such as the Day in the Park, we also work with on the restoration days, we also work on the Bike to Work Day. So there's a number of community events that we support. Teen dances, this is an activity that we're gearing back up again, we had a lull, then we do dances at the middle school, and some years they're good, some years the people don't really show up, so we're trying that again. We do, we support the Littman School and teen school, teen after-school activities, we also work with the library on their teen after-school activities, and then at the pool we do lap swim, swim classes, recreational swim, there's also a water aerobics, and there's also a scuba class that's supported at the pool. So there's a lot that we do, we try and hit as many age groups as we can. For the budget highlights that we have for the upcoming year, we are bringing in a new recreation manager, we talked about that at a previous council meeting, we're in the midst of the recruitment for that position. Also in the budget, we have a request for money for public art implementation guidelines, I talked about that very briefly at last night's meeting. What the Parks and Recreation Commission is looking for is an ability to create some kind of community education program around public art, so that way people understands what public art is, what is good for public art, what's available, and how we can have it become a Brisbane-oriented public art, as opposed to just art that you can put anywhere else in the country. So they would like to have a very robust public process for that. And we're looking at new furniture at Mission Blue in the community center, the Mission Blue furniture is getting a little bit old, and that's our crown jewel in what we rent out, so it'd be nice to have new tables and new chairs. And then we also need new chairs at the community center, and I know the Budget Committee has a different recommendation than that, and we can talk about that later. We'll need new lane lines at the pool, the lane lines that we currently have are about as, or as old as the pool itself, and they are getting very difficult to put in and put out, they're just getting worn out. So we're not able to tighten in the same way, they're not able to loosen as easily, it's hard to pull them out of the pool because of that, so we're looking at new lane lines. That could be something, if you would like, we could postpone for another year or two, but at some point in the near future, we will need to get new lane lines at the pool. Painting the pool office, it's been a number of years since we've opened the pool, and it's time for us to paint it. And then increased funding for the Littman After-School Program. The Two by Two Subcommittee met, went to the after-school program at Littman, this year we provided them $40,000, they have worked, I think, 70 to 80 children in their after-school program, and they would like to have an additional $10,000 to expand the program, to have additional students, and also to offer additional programming. We also have in the budget $10,000 for walkway improvements, these are the walkways throughout the town. As you were talking about Councilmember Lentz, there's spots in town where it's difficult to use the walkway because the grades are not quite right, and maybe stairway would be better. Also, there was a plan, I think it was also from the 1970s, where they looked at every single walkway in town and did a very small design on how to add landscaping to them and how to make them more user-friendly. We haven't implemented that yet, I know that's sitting in the Public Works Department, I saw the plans, and so did the Trail Committee, and they thought that would be good, and if we budget, what they're thinking is $10,000 a year, we can slowly but surely work our way through all the walkways and make them better in town. Also increased funding for Day in the Park, Day in the Park is a citywide event that we attract people for, nonprofits are there, we also, this last year started having vendors there, this is something that's very family-oriented. We have a number of activities for the children, we do the Derby, we do different kinds of rides or events for them that they very, very much like, but we're also looking at trying to keep that updated and new, because after a while, some things get very tired and people stop showing up because it's just not, you know, what, you know, just kind of, they've been there, done that. So one of the new things that we're looking at is trying to bring a zip line into town, and something like that costs $3,500. So they're looking at trying to upgrade that event to make it more relevant for more people in our city at this point, and they feel that $10,000 would help them make that a better event than it is today. And then the last item that's new in the budget is an annual fire hydrant painting art show, we have that now in the City Hall Conference Room, or what we like to call our gallery, and it's a program that we budget $500 every year for new paint, to paint for the fire hydrants, but this year we did an art show with it, and it seems to be very successful, people very much like that, and we would like to do that again in the future, and the cost for that is $2,300. And those are all the highlights of the Parks and Rec, I can go into a lot more detail on all the programs, but I figured just stick to the things that are new.
Laurie, would you like to start?
Thank you. So you mentioned the fire hydrant painting art show, so would that cost be for additional painting, or just additional pictures to be taken of the fire hydrants that were painted?
That would be the additional, that would be the cost of the pictures and the mounting of the pictures, the $2,300.
Okay, because I have selected, a selection of pictures for, selection of the fire hydrants for featured, so you'd feature new ones every year?
Right, as we paint new ones, we would pick new ones to feature. So we have $500 in the budget to paint new fire hydrants.
Oh, okay.
Because there's, we do not paint all the fire hydrants that need to be updated, if you go drive through town, you'll notice a number of the fire hydrants still look a little bit old for paint, and there's also a number of fire hydrants that could be painted in town.
So will there also, there will be an annual fire hydrant painting event?
Yes.
Is that the goal?
That is the goal.
And what is the cost of that event?
About $500.
$500, and that's in the budget as well?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And that has been in the budget, we've always had the ability to touch up the fire hydrants as we've gone through.
Okay. So you mentioned the Day in the Park, I was going to ask about that increase. What are the other activities aside from a zip line that would be included in this increase of?
They are still working through that process to figure out exactly what those other kinds of activities would be. Part of it is they're waiting to see if the City Council would want to try and refresh it up and to provide more funding for that.
Do we have any data showing how many people show up at Day in the Park each year?
We don't, I don't, we don't keep a count, because people show up, they leave, they come back, and we don't sell tickets to everybody who shows up there. So we don't really have a-
Well, it's a free event.
It is, it is a free event. I mean, you can buy tickets for the rides, or you can buy tickets for food, but we don't have a count of how many people show up, because it, as you know, it's free and it's an open park.
Okay. Well, I just want to remark that last year, I remember the band was very good, right? They had, did they have the Forever, the Michael Jackson Foreverland band there?
Yes.
That was also concerts in the park, right? At, they were at Day in the Park, I think.
They were at Day in the Park last year.
And I thought that was really successful, to add that music. The concerts in the park?
Yes.
I see there's a recommendation to decrease that by $4,000, and what is that about?
It's just that we're looking at less expensive bands, we've got six bands scheduled for this year, and it's going to cost about that much for the six bands.
Have we considered ever expanding the number of weekends and number of bands that we've had?
We always look at it, last year I think we had four, so this year we are expanding it to six.
We are, okay.
And if we are able to re, this is done through fundraising, and if we're able to raise more funds, we would look expanding at the number of weekends.
How much is usually raised through the fundraising?
We try and raise all of it through fundraising, all of that's, all that is budgeted.
Oh, I see, so it's budgeted, but then we usually don't end up spending it because people, donations, you're saying?
Well, we, in order to spend money, it's got to be in the budget, it just hasn't offsetting revenue for it.
Okay, great, because I always notice that the concerts don't start until, I think, July, and I-
Right.
It'd be, it'd be nice if there was a bigger fundraising appeal that, you know, maybe we could start the concert series even earlier, because it goes until the end of September, right?
Well, this year they're going from the beginning of July through the middle of August.
Oh, okay.
Last year they went through, from, they went, they were in August. There's always a challenge as to when it's windy, what the weather is going to be.
Yeah.
How much daylight you have, when people are on vacation, when school starts, because most people don't want to be there when school starts, also when it starts getting dark, because what we heard last year is going into August, and, you know, I think that first weekend in September, people were concerned that it was too dark, because a lot of people bring their children there, and they kind of, I don't know why, they lose track of them in the dark.
That's always one of my favorite events in town.
It is, and that's why, you know, that's why the Parks and Recreation Commission went from four to six this year.
Good, I'm glad to see that.
And they really try, trying to figure out what the right time is, and I will tell you, whatever the right time is for somebody, it's not the right time for other people. And I think we have changed the starting time and the ending days of the day of Concerts in the Park almost every other year since I've been here. We've tried all, I think we've tried anywhere from middle of June through the end of September, and whatever we pick, it's not right for somebody.
And as, I noticed last year at the concerts, they had some, was it like smoothie and maybe crepe trucks, does the city coordinate those?
We try to.
Food trucks as well, and has there been any outreach to local restaurants to see if they want to offer, I think, I think Manas may have had some deals, and maybe some other restaurants as well?
We reach out to all the restaurants every year, asking them to do that.
Okay.
Because we thought that would, that would be a good idea, a lot of them don't want, don't participate, and, you know, they can't be at the park itself, because you would need certain kinds of Health Department permits to actually be at the park, which the trucks have already.
Well, it's not a far walk.
Right. And we have, we have reached out to the different businesses, asking them to participate in that, and some offer, some do it and some don't.
Mm-hmm, great, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, I'm going to be quick, Stuart, so how's the recruitment going for the Recreation Manager?
It's going very well, we just received the resumes from the people that the recruiter has chosen, there's a very nice selection of people who have experience in recreation for a number of years, they're moving, it seems as a lot of them are moving up through their careers, which is what we're, what we're, kind of what we're looking for, is people who are moving up and up and trying to improve themselves. There are people who have very, who have very local experience, and people who have experience from the Greater Bay Area. So I thought Terry Black did a very good job in that recruitment, and because of that, we're looking at probably using her again for the finance manager.
Okay.
We thought she did a good job on this.
Good. Good question, you know, I don't have a question about any of the programs, because, you know, I'm quite familiar with those. Tables and chairs at Mission Blue, we could really go without those, right? Leading question here, I mean, I've seen the condition of them, and it's like-
You know, if we, if we want to continue to rent the facility for weddings and other special events, I think it would be in our best interest to upgrade those. Now, what the park, what the Subcommittee would say is you take those chairs that are there now, and you move them down to the community centers.
I, I, I see what their recommendation is.
Right.
But I don't really agree with the assessment, I guess, you know?
Okay.
That if we absolutely had to go without them, I mean, it's not like they're broken.
They're not broken.
And stuff like that, so I mean-
Actually, I've heard that quite a few are broken.
But they're weather-worn, I mean, the, the challenge is, is storage, and so what we're looking for is hardier chairs, because a lot of the stuff that we need to store is stored outside now, because the inside is being used by the risers, which we need to store for the special events. So we can't, you know, before, we used to have them stored in the back closet, but we don't have them all stored there anymore, so they are getting beat up by the weather.
So anything that we purchase is going to go through the same weather?
They would go through the same process, but we would get chairs that are more geared towards that for the future.
So they're stored in an outdoor?
They're, they're stored outdoors in the over, in the underhang area.
So they're exposed to the weather?
They are, because we, because we don't have enough storage there for everything that we need to store. I mean, one of the things we could look at is getting a shed to store stuff in up there, but that would then change the feel for the outside of that as well.
Yeah, that's kind of a logistical issue.
It is a logistical issue.
Yeah.
And you can't really store them far away from there, because they're used every, almost every weekend.
Okay. Well, I'll keep a little bit of prejudice towards that myself, but I want to see how it comes. Really, I, you know, I'm happy with the recreation program as far as, you know, overall.
Thank you.
And it's always, recreation's always one of those costs that you're never going to recover 100%, but it's also one of those community benefits that really make Brisbane a better community.
True, I mean, the way I look at it is every city has basically the same type of police department, the same basic fire department, you drive on the same basic streets, what makes the communities, the, you know, separate, different and distinct from each other is the Parks and Recreation Programs, because those are all offered differently in different cities.
Yeah, it really does, and the aquatics program too, so I mean-
Correct.
It's certainly been successful along with the, the pool upgrades and everything like that, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, too, by the way, on juggling quite a few balls through the years here.
Thank you.
You know?
Appreciate that.
Cliff?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, so the, the walkway improvement, so there used to be a plan?
It was a sketch that was made, I'm going to look to Councilmember Miller to see if you remember, I think it was 80, it could have been like late 70s, early 80s, there was-
The walkway plan was in the 70s, right?
Right.
Mid 70s.
Ah.
And like, if you look at it, there's like a nice design, you know, shrubbery around it, there, you know, handrails, just to make it a much more pleasant walking environment, as opposed to what we have now, which is just very stark walkways. So the idea is that if we just put a little bit of money aside each year, you know, we can do some of those improvements, and maybe, you know, if it's a bigger level of improvement, save money for a couple of years to get to that.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good idea. The implementation guidelines, so I know that, you know, that's something that we need in order to assess what is acceptable art. The Park and Rec Commission is requesting $25,000 to do a community workshop, to get community buy-in on what the guidelines should be. Have, have we looked at, looking at other cities who have very robust and very, you know, community buy-in art ordinances and are already in their cities, have we looked at their guidelines, and maybe perhaps just taking their guidelines and using those for our city?
We have, and when we went through the process of propose, when the, when we, when the Parks and Recreation Commission went through the process of proposing the ordinance itself, they did that process, so they looked at probably 20, 30 different public art ordinances and their implementation guidelines. What the, what the Parks and Recreation Commission and their Subcommittee really feel is that public art is a grassroots effort, and until the community is, really understands what public art is, and how it can benefit the community, and how it can benefit develop, you know, the developments that they're located in, or how, you know, what makes good public art versus bad public art, that education process is what's needed. It would be easy for them to come forward and say, here's a set of guidelines that we think would be appropriate, but then the first time somebody came in with a piece of public art as part of that guideline, their concern would be that there'd be an outcry from the public, saying, that's not what we as a community think is, we should be having as public art. So they would like to do all that work upfront with the community, so what they're looking at is something, you know, there's two ways to do that, they could bring in a person who had, whose expertise in public art guidelines, and there's a number of them who live in California, because it's a robust industry at the moment, or has been in the past, and they can come in and say, here's what should be in a public art guideline. The other process is what they're thinking is to bring in experts in different areas of public art, and bring in different types of curators, or people who've worked, who have worked on public art, or people who's designed public art and really talk, and to have that education process, very similar to what we, as I've said, what we've done in the Baylands, at University of Brisbane, Baylands type of atmosphere, where we bring in outside experts to come in and talk about the benefits from an economic perspective, from an aesthetic perspective, and all those different kinds, and to try and get some real excitement in the community about public art.
Now, as a first step, though, we could potentially look at several guidelines from some other cities that have done it really, really well, and we could then make that assessment of, okay, yeah, that's nice what they did in these other cities, but we really should do our own, instead of maybe jumping ahead and saying, okay, we really should do our own, because I'm having a hard time putting, you know, investing that money in something that I think has, that wheel has already been invented. And granted, yeah, it's not a Brisbane product, but, you know, it seems like there, there could be other ways to provide community involvement, but not at, at, at $25,000.
I mean, there, there are, I mean, we could try and, you know, we can try and do it, you know, with staff time, and that would just be additional time that, you know, I would need to dedicate towards this project, as opposed to other projects that the City Council would want me to, or, you know, you could try and do it with the staff, with the Subcommittee trying to lead those public processes. So, I mean, there's ways that we could try and do that, and the question when you start talking about, you know, finding cities that have very good public art implementation guidelines, you know, you can look at just to the north, and you look at San Francisco, which, you know, they have some magnificent pieces of public art, and then you go into other places in San Francisco, and they have some god-awful pieces of public art. So there's more than just what's in the implementation guideline, there's the community aesthetic. And, you know, we're small enough as a community that we should try and come to a community aesthetic for what that public art should be, before we start placing public art in the community. And I know, you know, right now we have a temporary process in place where we're meeting with the developer of-
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand Marina, and working with them to develop their public art, they've got a, with the Subcommittee of the City Council, and the Parks and Recreation Subcommittee from Parks and Recreation, and somebody from the, a citizen who's interested in public art, to develop what is specifically for that project, the, you know, and on an interim basis, that could work, but, you know, I think most people when they're coming in would like to have a better understanding of what the guidelines are.
Yeah, I know.
Very much like form-based codes that you talk about.
We should have implementation guidelines, and because of time, yeah, we're going to, you know, that's, we have to deal with it now, before we have those proper implementation guidelines that have been adopted by the City Council. But, okay, well, I'm sure we'll-
Yeah, I mean-
Just to piggyback on that, do you know what the cost was of the Baylands speaker series?
Oh, man, it was so many years ago, my guess is that may have been in the 20, 10 to-
We might want to talk about-
There was like, there was like five or six, they were costing-
Use like $10,000 to $15,000 budget each, if we don't think 25 is appropriate.
And Stuart, you know, teen activities, so we've, as long as I've been on the Council, we've allocated money for teen services, but here I don't see the past money that was allocated, now it's just the $40,000 that was from last year, so maybe it's somewhere else?
Well, we changed the way that the budget was developed a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Where we've gone from having it be a line item budget to a program-based budget. So I think part of what you're seeing is that transition period in this document. So the $40,000 is what was budgeted for after-school activities at Littman last year, we had, you know, so that was, so that's capturing it on the program basis.
Okay.
In the past, it would have been captured in different activities, and a lot of it was staff members at the teen center. So if you look at staffing costs in the past, they were much higher.
Got it, okay, yeah, so a lot of that was in staffing.
Correct.
Or not staffing anymore.
We're not, we are not staffing the teen center anymore, no.
No. Okay, so that, that, that makes sense, and then, so I'm glad that you have some good recruits for the Park and Rec manager position, you know, so a couple of things, you know, like Day in the Park, yeah, I think we need to have a more robust community engagement, even looking to bring folks from the outside and have them, you know, sample what Brisbane has to offer, and then fundraising for Concerts in the Park, so how do we, what's our fundraising strategy for?
We reach out to businesses in the community, we put out flyers, as well as having a donation request in the city news.
Okay.
So it reaches everybody.
So the, the Park and Rec manager, is, you know, are some of the top candidates that you guys are looking at, do they have those fundraising skills, those, you know, volun, you know, working well with volunteers to get them more robust into, you know, participating in special events?
I mean, we, we, they, they do have experience working with volunteers, they do have experience working with a variety of programs, you know, fundraising is just really not something that cities do very often. I mean, that's not something, you know, we receive tax money, so donations is really not the strength of most, so I don't know how much experience, direct experience they have with that type of an activity.
Yeah, I guess maybe not so much on the fundraising part, but just, you know-
Working with volunteers and advocating-
You know, on trying to build events.
And building community relationships.
Mm-hmm.
Because that's really, you know, what we're really looking for is to, you know, build the community relationships. You know, it's been, it's difficult, you know, when we started our recreation programs to the extent that we have them, you know, it was back in 2000, we hired a, you know, a full-time department head, we had three full-time supervisors plus a recreation coordinator working specifically with the teens, as well as we had, you know, somebody who was specifically working in the after-school programs, and working with that age group. You know, since that time with the recession, we have reduced to a part-time department head, and we've reduced to two supervisors, and we just, this year, hired a rec coordinator for the pool, so, you know, part-time person. So really, you know, we've really thinned out that professional level, so the communications that we have with the public, trying, trying to bring in new classes, trying to do all those kinds of things, we've not had that opportunity with the staffing that we've had. We've tried to do it when we can, you know, when we hear that there are needs, we reach out to not only the people who are in town, which we do through signs, but we reach out to other communities and see what programs that they're offering, see if the people who are offering their programs would like to come to Brisbane. The challenge is, is what, you know, if we're reaching out to somebody who has a very successful program in South San Francisco, or Foster City, where you have 50, 60,000 people living there, and they can be there and get 15 to 20 people in a class, they can charge a certain amount, and then if they come here and try and charge that same amount, and we get four people signed up for the class, which is proportionally much better than you get in Foster City, but still it doesn't provide the funding. So the way that we've done our contracts with them, with our recreation contractors, and almost, and all of our classes are done through contract, is they get 80% of whatever is received in the, in the program fees, and they get 80% of that, and we get to keep 20%, and the 20% covers our need to open and close buildings, it covers our cost of registration, and all those kinds of different issues. You know, so if you're charging $6 for a program, you get 80% of that, you get $4.80, you get four people, you're getting $20 for a, coming to Brisbane to put on a program, and as opposed to going in South San Francisco, where if you have a similar kind of contract, you might be getting 50 or 60 bucks an hour. So, you know, and I had this conversation with Parks and Recreation Commission, if we would like to change that dynamic where we subsidize a lot of the, you know, we subsidize classes differently than we do now, where we guarantee a certain amount of money to instructors, as opposed to just basing it off of the fees that they, that we take in, you know, I think we could have a more robust program for different, for different age groups, but the challenge is, is that would mean that the Parks and Recreation Commission, Parks and Recreation budget would have to increase to cover what we're not taking in in fees. You know, and the City Council has adopted a fee policy where, you know, seniors, senior programming is free, children programming is not supposed to recover, you know, by and large more than 25% of the cost, or teen programs are not supposed to do that, adult programs are supposed to be pretty much self-sustaining.
Mm.
You know, when you, you know, so, you know, we would need to relook at that basic philosophy of how do we go about bringing, you know, bringing in contracted staff to provide program if we want to have a different type of system than we have now. Such a bad comment that Clay had to leave the room, it looks like.
All right, thank you, Stuart.
Welcome.
Ray?
Couple of questions.
Okay.
I'm on page 174. And just on one issue, I just need some help with- And just on one issue, I just need some help with as to where this comes from, I've forgotten.
Okay.
And I'm looking at S D one, which is the B E S contribution.
Yes.
So, what is that and where does that come from? What's the history of that?
Uh, that is a J P, that's part of the J P A that we have with the school district where we get to use their building. And we get to use some of their classrooms. And then we pay for, basically, we pay for different types of programs in the, in that school. We pay for, you, basically, it's, we're, we're trading out their, you know, some of, some of what they provide community-wide. Or for their, for their ability to do stuff that we get to use their portable, we get to use their facilities. So, you know, the portable that we use, our after-school program.
Right.
Is a school district property. When we use the B E S, you know, this summer, we're going to be in, our summer camp is going to be in the cafeteria and in one of their classrooms. Our preschool is in one of their, periodically uses their classroom and uses their play equipment. So, this is our contribution to them for those kinds of things.
So, it, it really sounds like it's closer to space rental.
You know, I don't, it's not quite what we would say, but yes. There's trade-offs that we make.
Sure. So, it's not just, here's some money, guys.
Well, we, we get benefit, we get benefits from the, from the school district.
Right.
For the money that we provide to the school district, but it's not a quid pro quo.
Okay.
Type of arrangement.
Yeah, okay. I, I get it. I just didn't remember what that was for. Okay, the next is the high school bus.
Yes.
Which has been something that's discussed a lot in the past.
Yes.
And there was some movement on, at least on the prior council to see if the, the schools would pick up more of that.
We've asked.
And so, I take it that's going nowhere?
We have asked and we're still paying for it. We, we've, we rate, we have raised that question, I think, within the last year or so with the school district. And, you know, as they've gotten more funding, was this something that they would reinstate? And they have said no. And also would cost them more to do their, to do a bus program than it cost us to do a bus program.
They just don't wanna do it no more, Ray. And we've kind of picked the ball up on it, you know. And we've talked with Samtrans about it and we've gotten some bus routes.
Got some bus routes changed for Jefferson.
But for the most part, the problem is just.
Westmore.
Kids going to Terranova and, you know, and, you know, shipped all the way down to Pacifica.
Right. I mean, Samtrans could do it if it was part of a normal, close to a normal route that they have for other purposes other than just as a school.
Growing up in Brisbane, when I went to high school, you either went to Jefferson or your parents sent you to a parochial school.
Right.
Verdun or Sarah. And that was it.
That was it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I just thought I'd raise the question.
We do get a little bit of funding back, you know, we, we do charge parents for that. And, you know, I think we get somewhere between ten and sixteen thousand dollars a year.
But it's ninety-five thousand, so there's quite a gap.
There is quite a gap.
If I, if I may, just kinda piggyback on that. So, um, so the increase in cost is about ten thousand dollars and.
Well, if you look at last, the year before this year, eighty-five thousand was the budget. If you look at the year before, it was ninety-one thousand is what actually cost us.
Okay, okay.
Correct.
So, have we asked parents to?
We do ask them to pay a little bit more. We have raised the amount over the years.
Okay.
I mean, the challenge is, you know, in order to raise the full amount, you know, for, we do provide a discount for people who are, who are low income. You know, so the number of people who are on free and reduced lunch reduces the amount that we could take in if we were to charge enough to those who were not on free and reduced lunch. You would have many parents coming to you and asking you to reduce the cost.
And is, is the bus full every morning?
No.
Because, yeah, I mean.
But we do allow people from other municipalities to ride the bus. What we do is we allow, we have, we keep it Brisbane only for their first two weeks to see how many people are going to be riding the bus after the first two weeks. We do have a waiting list from people from Daly City and from South San Francisco who want to ride the bus. And after the two weeks, when we know how many seats we have available from using all Brisbane residents first, we do then reach out to non-residents too.
So, do you know what the, the population breakdown is?
Um, we probably have six or seven from non-Brisbane. And we probably have, we start the year probably close to forty. But as the year progresses, less people ride the bus for a couple, for a couple of reasons. The big one is people earn sixteen and can start driving.
Right, okay.
So, you know, as people learn how to drive, they no longer ride the bus.
So, with the, the Brisbane population and the six or seven.
We're, we're still not quite full.
Still not quite full.
Not quite full.
Okay.
But you never, you know, it's one of those things you never know until the school year begins as to how many people are going to Terranova and Oceana.
It just seems like more and more people lower or, you know, that graduate from Littman or not participating at the Jefferson Union High School District.
Um, you know, this year, I've asked a breakdown for the upcoming year. I asked for that back in January or February. And there are more people going to Terranova and Oceana next year than went this year. But that could be because there may be less freshmen who got into Westmore and have gone to Westmore in the past.
It seems like that.
So, what you get is a, you know, depend, part of it depends on where the different, where parents want to send their children within the Jefferson Union High School District as to how many people ride it. Any given year.
If I could piggy up, could piggyback on that question, so, um, since it, does it stop in other cities then?
No.
How do the students from?
They come, they come here.
They get a, they get a drop-off here.
Yes.
And have the other cities ever, ever contributed since they have their own residents using our bus? And what, do you have a breakdown? Did you say what the breakdown was?
It's probably, you know, forty children Brisbane, five to seven non-Brisbane.
Okay, and is it a full-size school bus?
Yes.
Have we considered, you said it's not quite full, okay.
It's not quite full, but it's full in.
Full enough that we couldn't like reduce it to a shuttle bus?
No, I mean, a shuttle bus would carry about twenty, I think, sixteen to twenty. And we have more than that.
Okay.
We do provide an after-school activities bus and that is a smaller school bus. So, the afternoon bus has less people who ride it than the morning bus. Because everybody has to go there in the morning, but not everybody has to ride it coming home. But we still have more than what's available in just a short bus in the, in the afternoon.
Thank you.
It's funny, Brisbane got more, more population now than we did in the early seventies, I think. I think we're about the same as we were in nineteen sixty-three. But when I went to high school, had three Greyhound buses, different stops in town and they were always full. Here we are, this is one small bus, so it's amount of kids that are going.
So, if you think about how many people are in your grandchildren's class at B E S, there's probably thirty?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, so you multiply that by four, you'd have a hundred. Out of that hundred, forty of them are going to, you know, either Terranova or Oceana. Probably another ten are going to Jefferson. So, probably half of the people are going to either other district schools or private schools. And that's probably about the ratio that you would expect in this kind of a community.
And with the charter school, how do those students get to school? Some at Shasta or that they, does it find their own transportation?
Yes. They, they have not asked us to provide a bus for them yet.
Okay.
And if they do, it would be somewhere in the ninety thousand dollar range. So, it would be a council decision to make if they want to spend it on that as well.
Unless it's the same bus.
I think, I think their school times are slightly different.
Okay.
Which of course changes, creates problems.
So, do any other communities provide bus service for their?
Neither, I know neither South San Francisco nor Daly City do. I mean, South San Francisco, of course, has the South San Francisco school, high school. And they also have San Mateo, I mean, Samtrans lines run through South San Francisco. Samtrans lines, lines run through Daly City. So, also Daly City students, you know, mostly go to Westmore and to Jefferson. I mean, the challenge is is that we're an outlying area within the school district.
Yeah, the Bay Shore kids take the twenty-two and that goes to Jefferson and now Westmore, I think.
That's because Maria did a good job in getting the twenty-two to start going to Westmore. And I think Cliff worked on that as well as part of the Samtrans. So, no, that's.
So, you're gonna keep on, do you still have questions?
Two more.
Two more, okay.
If you don't mind. Yeah. You ready? Okay, I was a little bit confused by the table that, which I'm glad you're doing, but there's something that wasn't clear to me.
Okay.
And that is the column that has, some of them, some of the columns are headed users. And then there's one that's labeled annual users.
Which, which page, same page?
I'm looking, well, there's several tables after the, the first one is on one seventy-five.
Okay.
And then there's several more tables like that.
You know, and it's, you know, and I think it was just probably my inability to remember what I called it. And this is a challenge that we've talked, that we talked about in the budget committee, not this year, but last year as we were setting up the tables. Is how do you look at users? Do you look at them as individuals or do you look at them how many times a, the same person has touched the same program? Because, you know, when you're having a taekwondo program, you know, it's really difficult to say, you know, you know, we get six people per class. But we do ten classes per year. So, the question is, is that six users or sixty users? And I think.
Or sixty hours of using.
Or six, right, I mean.
Because one of the things that, that I noticed.
And that might be a better way to do it, but, you know, that might be.
This very issue, I mean, I was looking at, you know, the after-school program, which is for quite a few hours, you know.
Correct.
Five days a week.
Correct.
All during the school season.
Mm-hmm.
And it only had, you know, six hundred.
Or six hundred. Okay, so that would.
Whereas you look at the seniors, you know, the program, which is just a, you know, one lunch in a week. And that had one thousand nine hundred and twenty. So, somehow or other, the comparability there just fails for me.
And that's the problem. So, you know, and they, you know, and we didn't talk about maybe doing hours, annual hours of users, annual user hours. We didn't talk about that last year, but we can look at making that change for, for the future. Because that makes more, that does make sense. And we try and, it would create that comparability.
Okay.
Because that was the conversation we were having last year when we were trying to figure out how to do this.
Right.
And as you know, we're always trying to improve it every year, so that would help.
Okay, that's my point on.
I mean, because you get to the point where you have a sixth grade track team where we have five people participate in it. And this is on page one seventy-five.
Right.
But those, you know, we do that multiple times a week.
Right.
So, it's, it may be just five children, but they're participating in.
A lot of hours.
And probably, you know, fifty to a hundred hours.
Right, yeah. So, that, to me, is a more useful measure.
And, you know, and then the question is, is, you know, is there ever, you know, we try to say that, you know, there are minimum numbers that we try and reach. But, you know, when we have someone like a sixth to eighth grade track team, you know, is having it for five people beneficial? Because you get five people who are involved in a sport as opposed to, you know, hanging out on the streets. You know, and that's part of what we try and do with, you know, the teen activity, our, our middle school activities is to try and keep a lot of them occupied during that period of time. You know, with other, with older teens, you know, we've had this conversation in the past. What we always, you know, older teens usually really socialize around their high school. There's a lot of activities that are in the high school. So, the number of, 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 of high school teenagers who do not have some kind of activity after school. Either it may, it may be working after school, it may be staying after school for sports, maybe staying after school for other activities. You know, it's not very great, but the ones who, you know, the ones who have the hardest time are the middle school students. And, you know, what we've, you know, and what we found with the after-school program at B E S is capturing them at the school, you know, really captures them. And I think that's what the two-by-two committee found is capturing them at Littman. Really captures a greater number of people than if they were to try and wander down to the teen center. Because what happens when they wander down to the teen center is they stop off at Julie's and then they wander around someplace else. So, they're not captured in the same way. So, we have a much more robust program by working with the school district. And having the school district run it at the school.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Yeah, one more.
Long answer to a short question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, it's a part of the measure that, you know, when Cliff and I were on the budget committee, we were struggling with how to get comparability. Of measuring, you know, one program versus another and how much we're spending on them and the bang for the buck kind of thing. And this was an, an effort to try to get some information on that. And I was having a problem with that particular user measure.
And, yeah.
So, I'm glad we talked about it. The, the last question has to do, onto the pool now. And there's an item about the, the solar thermal. And the question I have has to do with the efficiency of the solar thermal.
I don't know if Randy's listening.
Contribution to the energy use of the pool. And I remember we had these auditors come in and, and check that all out, it was about two years ago maybe. And, and they came to the realization that because of the fact that the, the heating of the pool was primarily very early in the morning. And that solar wasn't doing a whole lot then. And so, that's why the, the natural gas heating was really providing most of the heating. Heck of a lot was not coming from the solar panels. And they made a recommendation of some kind of computer programming that would sort of increase the contribution of the solar thermal to the heating of the pool. And so, I haven't heard what came of all of that or, you know, it was there or has there been an increase in what the solar panels are able to do? Because that was quite an expensive investment. And it turns out that it wasn't creating what we had hoped for and we were trying to enhance that. And, but I don't know whether that's working or not. So, that's my question.
Um, you know, I think we, I think what my answer would be is I, I would probably need a little bit of time to study that to see exactly what, what that impact is. The challenge is always the, you know, we'd have to do an analysis of outside temperature. I mean, what I have been told is that the, the solar, the solar panels are doing what they're supposed to be doing. The new computer program is doing what it's supposed to be doing. So, the challenge is in the end result.
Sounds like Randy was trying to answer that. Is it?
I'm sorry.
Were you gonna?
I apologize.
No, it's okay. You, you had your back to me. There's no way you could have seen it. So, we do monitor that on a monthly basis. And there was some slight improvement after those modifications were made to the system. But the pool solar thermal has never reached what it was designed for. It was supposed to be designed for six thousand thermes a year and it sometimes struggles to get to five thousand.
So, it's unlikely we can expect to do any more or so that's kind of it?
You mean, is, do any more as far as performance?
Mm-hmm.
That, that's correct. Because the, the challenge that I'm told now, it's not that we don't have enough sunny days, we just don't have enough warmth to really heat up that amount of water.
Did they solve the problem of the timing of the day and so forth or?
To the extent that they could, yes.
Yeah? So, there's no suggestion or recommendation?
No, there was not.
Might be able to do?
There, there was not.
Is that it for your questions? Clark?
I think I went first.
Yeah, she went first.
Oh, I said Clark. You, you're done.
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay.
More ways than one.
Finance is next. I'll, I'll let you back up, don't worry.
No, no.
So, I did have a question about the, I have to find it now because I flipped back and forth too many times. On the park and recs to the schools, do we, the maintaining the fields, is that in that eighty-three? Not in, part of that eighty-three thousand.
Thirty-eight thousand, no. So, maintenance of the fields, it really falls under the public works department when we talk about buildings and grounds. Or no, sorry, park maintenance budget. So, that's where we pay for water and we pay for maintaining the fields.
And that's in agreement with the school district to use?
To use their fields.
Their fields?
Yes.
That we maintain them if we can have public access?
Yes. And we also schedule them after-school hours.
Okay.
The best we can.
So, I know that I do have one member of the public who would like to speak on park and recreation issues.
I guess that's how big it can get. Oh, no.
No, it's gonna get bigger.
I'm Ania Miller and.
I'm Anya Miller, and you know where I come from, during the time that I was serving, the, we had hardly any recreation, and what we had was all handled by the community groups. They considered their responsibility, and talk about community buy-in, you don't have that now, because the community groups are not really involved in doing active, constant things, recreational things. And, and then we had, you know, women's club was doing fire hydrants, and all kinds of other things, building playground equipment with the lions, and there was so much going on. There was a group of us that started the first preschool in a rec building, Snow Silver Spot. It was all volunteer, and the city was hardly putting any money. The, the community groups raised the money that they could, provided the services that they could. And of course, since you became more able to fund things, then it became a city part of the budget, but it still is a discretionary budget. It is not required by law that you provide recreation. Of course, all cities do, and you want to be as good as anybody else. And I thought that was very good, that you previously had a budget committee led by a former councilwoman Richardson, who was actually focusing on the priorities, and recreation was not the highest priority. So that was clearly seen at that time, only they never got into actually setting the priorities and, and the principles of where the money is. That's where the priorities have to relate to the money. So, and of course, democracy is the other thing that I care about, and equal provision of services to taxpayers, from taxpayers' money. And so I looked at this recreation budget, and particularly since I've noticed that there really is not, no weekend programs at all, because your city officials work only five days a week. So no programs are offered on weekends, except there's some volunteer sports, I think, but, but no, nothing like for working parents whose children could use some weekend programs, preschool particularly. So I looked at the different age groups, and I didn't consider any of the facilities, because they are, of course, shared by different age groups, but what is specifically spent for different age groups? And of course, adults, for instance, pay, there's a lot of fees paid, and most of the classes you offer for adults are very well paid, for us, Stuart was saying, the percentage of, of fees is high, so you're not really spending too much taxpayer dollars to help adults. And I came up with this team sports and classes, the yoga, I think, was the one that cost the most for the taxpayer, you know, just under $10,000. No, $6,000, $7,000. Seniors, of which I'm beneficiary, have wonderful programs, and only under seniors and teens do you actually have salaries dedicated to that age group. All the other recreation staff salaries, of course, serve many age groups and programs. But, but for seniors, the senior club, you know, gets $45,000. That used to be totally self-supporting community group. The city had nothing to do with it. They, I think they even paid rent, I'm not sure about that, they met in a very decrepit building before the community center was built. But, and the classes, you know, the, the wonderful aging, dental aging class that should cost, and I don't have to pay anything, it's free. And why should it be free for me when all adults, adult adults are paying for their classes, yoga? It, it, it seems like seniors are much favored, as if they couldn't afford to pay their share. Sunrise room, $23,000. And, you know, there are people drop in there and have a cup of coffee, they have coffee on all, all the time, cookies on the table all the time, two staff members there all the time. It just seems that they are very, very well served, to the tune of, but, but I figured $83,000 a year. And the elementary school kids get the $38,000 that you're giving for the, and I figured that's the same as, as the cost of the, the after-school for, is that, that's correct? Covers after-school for elementary. So they, they, you know, they get half of what the seniors get. But then, the group and preschool, very little, $15,000. And yet, they are the ones that can't use all, all of facilities, that the fields and by themselves, they have to be supervised. But the group that really gets served well is the teens, that, you know, including a school bus, that is a service provided by you taxpayers, us taxpayers, to the teens that go to high school. And the after-school program, $50,000. And team sports, you know, they, they, they have a lot of services, and I hear these people want to skate park, saying, there's nothing for the teens, they're providing nothing for the teens. Well, I think that there's a lot provided for the teens, and, and to the tune of $147,000 that I see, just based on looking at the budget as presented. And I just would hope that this, you gave the Park and Rec Commission, I think, a charge to try to be equal between us age groups and participants, as the, the numbers. I understand it's hard to, to really get it right, but, but at least by group of age groups, and who needs the services, who cannot go and get their own, as teens are free to move wherever they want, or by bus, and, but preschoolers and elementary school kids cannot. So they, I think that those two groups just need more attention, and including the weekend. But I hope that you will continue to stress to the Park and Rec Commission, especially if they are starting to get 100% increase in their fee, that they earn for meetings, that they really start analyzing the expenditures that they ask, and how, what is the priority between public art, education, and services for our smallest ones? And what, yeah, I, I, I just feel that there's some, and sort of personal projects that are very, very important, trails have to be accessible to handicapped, well, they should be accessible to strollers, I think. So that's, that's my feeling that, and hope, that you will continue the sense of prioritizing a little bit better about this discretionary money, that, you know, not what the unfunded liabilities that you have by government. They should, they have to be priorities, as opposed to recreation that is not equal. Thank you.
Thank you.
To, to follow up, do we have any, I, I know you've just seen this, that Anya gave to us, but is there some way we can get in the future a demographics of how many people are in these groups to be served?
Sure, I mean, we can go back-
By population demographics?
Sure, we can go back to census data and tell you the different categories. And I think the census data does under five, five to 18, 18 to whatever the, they pick for 60, and then 60 and over. So we can do something like that. I mean, you know, and as I said earlier, I mean, the challenge is always trying to get enough activities. We did in after, we did a weekend music class where we, we were about to cancel it until two hours before we were about to cancel it, two, two more people signed up for it. And we had, I think we had four or maybe five people for that weekend, and that person, you know, said, you know, that wasn't quite enough, is what they realized. And it's, you know, as I said earlier, it's the method that we pay for contract instructors. If we want to, you know, change that method for paying for contract instructors, we probably could get a more robust weekend programming. It's just a matter of, you know, what are the, you know, as Ms. Miller said, it's, how do, you know, how do we make those kinds of priorities? Where do we want to put the money?
And, and what kind of community buy-in you get for those programs?
Correct.
And I, I know a lot of the, the Park and Rec, some of the programs are handled through BDW, and the city doesn't pay out money for those programs-
No.
-but sponsors the space.
We sponsor the space, and we also sponsor them for, you know, when they do their shows and stuff.
Right, and they're-
And, and I think, you know, BDW has the same challenge that the city has, and when it tries to put programs together on the weekends. I mean, one of the challenges is if the people who are putting the programs together are doing it all during the week, they too would like to be, you know, the challenge is they would like to be with their children on the weekends. So they're, you know, it takes, it would take a little bit more of an incentive for them to give up their weekends to give classes. It's just a, and, you know, and Ms. Miller is right, we used to have a much more robust volunteer effort in this town at times.
Different times. You know, I mean, there was, in the 60s, you know, it was, recreation department was sponsored by the city, but they used the school, school district had more money back in those days in the 60s, and they utilized the physical education teacher as the recreation director. And so it all meshed together, and there was a lot more kids. And so the programs and stuff like that, it was, the Lions Club, and, you know, a lot of the small businesses sponsored like uniforms and stuff like that. But it did grow, and it was, the city council at the time put what money they had into recreation, because there was a lot of kids, so.
And, and we do-
And everything kind of flip-flopped, and then when, when Proposition 13 happened, we had zero recreation program. I mean, it nosed die right into the ground. And it stayed that way until I got on a council in 1993. It was pretty sparse, you recall, and so, you know, it's, it's a matter of, of choice, and I think as Anya said, that not a requirement, but it's one of those community benefits, I think, that if you can, you do provide to your citizens the best programs that you possibly can, because you want your kids, you know, the children, at least from my perspective, is to have a full program that they experience. And so when they grow old and stuff like that, that they can draw on that too, of their experiences of what they had as a childhood. You know, to me, when swimming was non-existent, it was broken promise, everybody blowhard city council, person that ran for city council, oh, get a pool, get a pool, get a pool, right? I mean, it's, it's true, right? And we end up going on recreation trips, you know, once a year, a Larson Pool out in, you know, Sloate, a Flyshacker Pool, you know. I didn't learn how to swim until I was 10 years old. And it's because I fell in a pool up in Oroville and had to, you know, it was one of those, or swimming in a river, you know, it was like one of those things, and, and there was nothing, you know, when it comes to that. And so now we have, you know, a, a really robust program, so, you know, from that, from that sense, you know, the kids that are growing up now, and, and I've heard some of them who are now young adults in their, in their twenties, that, wow, what a great childhood they had, you know, because these things were provided for them, you know, as, you know, eight, nine, you know, 10-year-old, 13-years-old. And, and so, you know, that's the kind of stuff that I, I, I think builds that foundation of community, and a recreation program is, is most important to develop that foundation.
I mean, we do have work, good working relationship with the library when, and they put on a number of programs, we have a good working relationship with BDW, and I do meet with the presidents of the Mothers of Brisbane every three to six months.
Yeah, also the soccer program, the soccer program is crazy here. I mean, it's, you know, the-
Yes.
It is unbelievable, you know, and the, and the amount of kids that play soccer nowadays, I mean, they, they, they all sign up, and, you know, that's a Saturday function.
Correct.
It, it is a Saturday function. You see up at the fields up here in Brisbane, you go to San Bruno, it's all tied together in AYSO.
Correct.
And so that's a, a volunteer organization. The Brisbane Youth Sports Authority, that's another one, they do the car washes and stuff, and those are a little bit for the older kids, but they still, you know, that, those are volunteer organizations that just sprung up out of, you know, because I want to provide my kid this, and so the city doesn't have to provide stuff for that.
I mean, we, we provide the fields, and we organize that for them, but you're right, we don't provide the coaching and everything else for that.
So there still is a, a, a good sense of volunteerism here, and, you know, you know, I mean, the Brisbane Dance Workshop, and that's a, a, a great, great program, you know, and some, some of the other things, you know, that, that go on, so. Anyway, it's, it's late now, it's 10:34, so I'll have to make a motion to extend the meeting to 11:00 PM.
Second. I think we're being a little unrealistic, but, um-
Doesn't mean we have a discussion. I'm just, I could go, I could say extend it to 12, but I, I may not be here mentally.
So all in favor?
Aye.
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 So I'll try and be quick on finance department. We do a lot of stuff, all of it involves money, other than the stuff that involves technology. So the budget highlights, we're gonna implement a new financial system, I hope, we had our first kickoff meeting with the consultant, and they would say that you'd be optimistic if it will happen in nine months. So we're hoping that by the, this time next year, we'll have the new financial system in place, which will be about 12 months from now, and hopefully it'll be better than what we have today. At least I know it'll be updated, which is my concern about the one we have today. We're working through two retirements, through retirement, two key staff members. We are gonna have our deputy finance director retire, and within another couple of weeks, we're going to have the person who does our utility billing and payroll retire. In order to cover for that, we are going to, we are reducing the deputy finance director's position to a finance manager, which is where she was when she first started, so we will have savings there. We're also gonna have a little bit of savings in the payroll person, because we're not gonna hire it at the same level, we're gonna hire it slightly lower. With that savings, we're looking to hire a new halftime office specialist, and we've got that recruitment underway, so hopefully you'll approve that tonight for us, or through this budget process. And that person will be doing our accounts payable. We're also looking at outsourcing our business license. There is no real cost to that, because what it'll be do, what we will do is use our muni services, who does our sales tax audits, and we're gonna do it in the same way that we do sales tax audits, that the cost of it will just be a reduction in business license revenue. So that's why you don't see an expenditure in your budget for that. What that will allow us to do is be able to, you know, over the years, we have spent much more time in entering data into the system. You know, as councilmember Miller says, you know, the information we're providing you for parks and recreation is a lot more robust than it was a couple of years ago, but that much more robustness, and I will say, I just did accounts payable, and I paid, did bill paying, and I don't do it very often, I don't do it very well, but I just did it a couple of weeks ago when one of my employees was not available to do that. And we now have bills that we would take one, would enter in one, in one set of keystrokes. Now because it serves five or six different programs in parks and recreation, we have to enter it five or six different times. So, you know, the more information that we provide, and the easier we make that information available, the more input, more time it takes us to do that input. So that's part of the challenge that we have for that. Also, you know, as we go through with the water billing system, as we create different kinds of mechanisms for trying to figure out capital charges, trying to figure out sewer charges, that takes more time, and then the amount of review that we spend doing- And then the amount of review that we spend doing that takes more time. Because one of the things that we make sure is that we're not overbilling people, so we do a lot of robust analysis before we even send the bills out. So that's why we're looking for those positions. Um, the new telephone system, uh, we're going to be doing, I was hoping to start working on that after the budget was done, but we are having some issues with the telephones, so I'll have a meeting about that next week. Uh, you know about the OPEB actuarial study, I talked about that in the overview, and the long-term financial planning issues. Uh, one of the things that Councilman Miller raised was the NIPDs. I'll, I'll end there. Hopefully that was quick.
Any questions for staff?
I have none.
Um, this is just.
Or just administrative services.
Just for finance at this point. I'll let Maria do human resources. If you have any questions on finance, I'll take them.
On finance, I just had a, on page eighty-five, I just wanted to note, I think there's a typo, it says Tyler should be training.
Should be.
Bottom, there's an N missing.
There is an N missing. Thank you.
No questions.
And Tyler is our new computer, our new financial system.
Just for a moment of facetiousness, I'd like to point out, uh, the most amusing typo that I found.
Okay.
On page one eighty-eight?
On one eighty-eight.
This is in recreation.
Okay.
Look up in the top line at the left.
Adversary. I was supposed to advisory. I was so close.
I like adversary.
Okay.
It's funny.
No wonder spell checked in caps that.
That's the, uh, that's the chess club.
Or debate.
Or debate. Any other questions on finance before I just?
Just one quick, how are we doing on the new computer, uh, system?
Um, we just had the kickoff meeting, um, so we're beginning to, um, go through the process of developing a new chart of accounts and all that, that kind of stuff. Betsy is taking the lead on that, so hopefully it'll be almost, we'll be mostly through it by the time she retires in December. Um, then fortunately, as I, as I said, that we probably won't be completely converted over until, uh, sometime between March and May of next year if we're lucky. And I don't think I'm going to convince her to stay any longer. But we will be looking for the recruitment and we're going to have overlap on the recruitment for the deputy finance, or the new finance manager, and that's already in the budget. Where the new finance manager would be here for nine months and then the deputy finance director is only here for six months. And that's part of the budget. But we're moving along. We finally got, we went through all the contract stuff, Michael was happy and everything is good.
Good evening, council. Um, I'll go over to human resources part as quickly as possible to give you a sense of the department breakout. We pretty much cover all areas in the human resources, everything from labor negotiations to recruitment, onboarding of employees, workers' compensation, training and development, our evaluation process, overseeing personnel rules and policy administration, benefits administration, and the citywide safety program. To give you some, uh, summary of our work plan and our budget highlights, um, one of the first things, as Stuart mentioned, is that we're looking at recruitment for our financial services manager. We're hoping to use Terry Black again, as she has been very helpful in, in our current recruitment for the recreation manager. Uh, we're also going to be taking a look at, um, onboarding of a new human resources technician. As you'll recall, we, our former HR technician has left to take on a promotion opportunity with another agency. We are in the process of reviewing our personnel rules and regulations to update them. Um, we have a lot of, uh, new issues coming up, including a paid sick leave law that affects part-time employees, that we'll incorporate in that as well. Um, continuing to administer and implement issues regarded, uh, related to the Affordable Care Act. Uh, we have negotiations coming up. As you know, we have some of our agreements that will be expiring in December of this year, so we'll be starting that process very, um, very soon. We're also looking at continuing our training program and continuing to be part of the, um, countywide training consortium program to provide training to our employees, and also looking at formalizing a training program for all employees to keep them, to keep, um, their skills up to date. And one of the last things is also, um, considering, uh, reviewing our, our dental program as, um, possibly looking from, moving from a self-insured plan to either using a third-party administrator or, um, looking at a, a dental plan. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. I, I have a question, Maria. So since, uh, Joya left and, and I guess there was discussion about, uh, using an outside service till you could get somebody hired and I don't see that in here in the budget.
I will defer that to Stuart.
So the reason it's not in here is that we have the position here at full time from the beginning of the year. So any, we will have salary savings that will cover that cost.
Okay.
Of that, of.
So it's being deferred out of salary?
It would come out of salaries when we do a mid-year adjustment.
Okay, and so we'll show a line item for that difference because?
Sure. It'll be, it'll show up in professional services and it'll be a reduction in salaries or some of the benefits that, as we go through that process.
Per contribution doesn't correlate with that, so, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Oh, I had a question.
I'm sorry.
Or comment. So, um, just on page eighty-eight, um, there's the reference to the labor relation, the, the, the legal, um, thirty thousand dollar.
Correct.
Amount, so, uh, just to note that, um, to cross-reference that with the legal, with the city attorney section.
Okay.
As we talked about yesterday.
Yes.
Yeah, I had a question last night.
That's it.
Okay. Then we will move on to central services.
I don't have any slideshow for that because of the central services, there's nothing real, there's nothing new there, there's no program highlights. And as I said last night, as we were going through the overview, central services are all those kinds of things that are not easily categorized by a single department, so these are cross-departmental types of expenditure.
I got a question on that.
Okay.
Page two oh-one, Bank of America account fees.
Yes.
What's going on there?
Well, they just charged, I mean, there's charges for us to keep money in Bank of America.
That is just ridiculous.
Well, you know, and.
So wrong, because we got CDs in there, don't we?
No, we, I mean, we keep a significant amount of money in there and we do get an offset for the amount of money that we get. But, but, you know, with the interest rates, we're being where they are, I think the offset is, that's a ten basis points if we're lucky. So point one percent is kind of what the offset in fees, but every time we write a check, receive a check, send a wire, receive a wire, do an AC, an automatic clearinghouse, all those costs. Um, so this is just a recognition of what it costs us to be.
It's wrong.
And if we did it in any other bank, we would be paying, we'd pay in any bank.
Cliff and I talk about this, you know, because, uh, both business accounts, man, that, you know, B of A has just gotten horrible, man.
If you would like, we could go out for, if we, if you would like, we could go out and do a bank RFP, but I would tell you, we are probably a significant banker, you know, accountant now.
Looking to doing our own bank again. Will we ever find out about that?
Bank of Brisbane.
I think Clay was going to call it Bank of Stu.
Bank of.
Watalope.
So on that same theory, I'm assuming that we pay a credit card fee for.
Yes.
Taking date ATM and debit cards, is that included in that bank fee?
No, that's just a reduction in revenue that we get for those. So there's a bank fee, you know, we, we pay for that. Um, we get, we get a credit card fee when we do ActiveNet, which is our Parks and Recreation software registration. ActiveNet, you know, takes money out of the top. Um, also, when we do, um, utility billing, we receive less money because a lot of our credit cards are for the water and sewer. So it's just less revenue that we take in by that credit card.
We don't show that as that separate bank fee.
No, we just show it as, you know, it's more of just a reduction in revenue. We could show it as what it costs us if you would like. I mean, it's just, it changes year to year based on how many people do that. Um, but I think it's two and a half percent. Two point two five plus ten cents per transaction? And a whole lot of different things depending whether you have the card in your hand, you have the card over the phone.
Fees versus.
Yes, all, all those kinds of things.
Those other fees, like, you know, the, the mergers are the ones that are paying for someone's.
One percent.
Their, their, uh.
They're giving, they're, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
All their gifts.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, it's wrong. Anyways.
I'm not going to fix that tonight.
No.
I just wondered why we didn't see it anywhere.
It's just a reduction in the revenues because it's easier to do it that way.
So I have a quick question, why is the Costco membership going up?
Um, you know, it's probably not actually going up, it's just the recognition of how many people we actually have who use, who use it. We have a number of people who have, who we do have cards for. The Marina has cards, um, Parks and Recreation has card, Wendy has a card, so we have just a number of people who have a card. So what it is, it's basic membership, you get a certain number of basic accounts.
Okay.
And then i- if somebody else needs, you know, other people who need to go have to have their own card and that's just the additional fifty-five dollars. Uh, you know, a lot of times what we do is we send, um, somebody from Parks and Recreation to do a city hall run. But we also, you know, if you have somebody from the Marina who needs to pick something up from Costco, or if you have somebody, you know, from Fire who needs to pick up something from Costco, they all need their own cards when they're there.
And then we, we put the three percent purchase history back somewhere, two percent cash back.
We do get the two percent cash back and I will, in the, at times in the past, we have used that for some, um, you know, when we've had employee recognition or other things, but, you know, we do, we do use that for, you know, to try and offset some of the costs for some of the other programs that we have.
And if it's not food-related purchases, you know, they have free shipping on almost everything, so you should look into ordering from their website as well.
You know, we do buy, we do a lot of, we do purchase a lot of food through Costco because we do that for our camp programs.
I figure.
I mean, we don't, we don't buy very, we don't usually buy very many other things through Costco because we have other mechanisms for buying stuff that does get shipped here. I mean, we'll do paper cups and plates though and stuff like that because we buy that in large bulk and that, majority of that is for Parks and Recreation.
Thank you. No other questions on this?
Thanks, Stuart.
Welcome. I don't think I'm sitting down yet.
Okay, we'll, we'll go back to.
Because you got one more to go.
City council page seventy-one through seventy-three.
Again, I don't have anything on an overhead for that. The budget is very similar to what you had last year, um, the, um, you know, of note is we've got, um, fifty thou, you know, ten thousand dollars for what would be considered volunteer projects. You know, when we do, when we do have projects that are mostly volunteer, there is usually some cost to the city to pay, you know, you know, at the very least pay for some of their items, pay for some of the material that they use to put it in or some, some things like that. Um, so we do have money, in case there's other volunteer projects like the park behind, um, the library. We also have fifty thousand dollars for the skateboard park, this is part of the overall financing plan that you had looked at previously, and there's fifty thousand dollars for the bike trail pedestrian master plan that, um, we've talked about previously. Other than that, it's a very similar type of budget that you've seen in the past. We've got, you know, funding for, um, travel and training as required. And the reason that the health insurance numbers are up is I don't know who's going to be on council. So I act as if the two, as if after the election, the people are taking family. I don't want to presume what that will be. But I know if, if it's the same people who we have now, it will be closer to what you see as the actuals in the past. Because I knew that was, I figured that was going to be a question that was going to be asked of me, I'd answer it beforehand. Just looking at Ray on that one because I.
So you want to talk about the, uh, pay adjustment for council members?
Sure, I'm willing to talk about that.
Okay, I want to start to reiterate, uh, what we heard from the city attorney.
Sure, so, um, I'll, I'll, I'll look to Clay to correct me when I, when I am mistaken. So currently, uh, the city council members get a hundred and sixty-five dollars. I think that was last adjusted in nineteen seventy-two, if I remember.
Eighty-two.
Nineteen eighty-two, if I remember, okay, I didn't quite remember the memo correctly, was corrected in nineteen eighty-two. State law provides that you are allowed a five percent increase, um, every year. Uh, so depending on how that works out, whether you do five percent times the one sixty-five and multiply that by thirty-three, or you take the five percent and compound it over time, you would have, I think it's somewhere between, um, a four hundred to a nine hundred dollar capability for an increase based on that. Um, what it, it goes into effect after, it goes into effect the election after that it's adopted. So if you were to adopt it, um, you know, with this budget and through the proper ordinances or resolutions, however that gets adopted, then it would go into effect with the November election. And the city attorney has stated that if it goes into effect for all council members who are sitting on council after the election is, um, certified. Um, so that would be a, if you would like us to look at that, we can. And, and we can bring back whatever the city council wishes us to. Is that a, right, you, okay.
So I was thinking, it's about time that, uh, we look at the compensation for council because it hasn't changed for thirty-three years. And you also saw the table of what other cities are doing. Uh, even Colma's over nine hundred dollars. So I was thinking, uh, not trying to, you know, go overboard, but to just bring it a little bit more up to date to what's reasonable. Uh, and as I said last year, there ought to be some kind of appropriate proportion between salary and, you know, reimbursement stuff and so forth. And, uh, now the reimbursement is, is basically, you know, twice what the salary is. And so it seems to me that we ought to, if you do the, the straight, uh, analysis that Michael did of, you know, five percent per year without compounding, but you use thirty-three years, uh, then you come up with, uh, something you could go as high as four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Uh, and that would be, you know, within all. And so we probably don't want to do that much of a jump. But, you know, maybe to three hundred dollars. Anyway, that's just a suggestion and, uh, for everyone to sort of think about it.
A- a- and in fact, you know, city council members have actually had a pay reduction over the last number of years because when you were sitting as the head of the RDA, you got paid to sit as head of the RDA. Um, with the successor agency, there is no compensation for being head of the successor agency. So you've in fact had a pay cut in the last four years.
How much was it? I'm sorry.
Knew you were going to ask, you know, as soon as I said it out loud, I knew you were going to ask me. Sixty-five dollars a month? Something like that, and, you know, it wasn't very much, but it was a little bit.
Not very much in the big picture of, uh, a hundred and, or how much is it, two?
Hundred and sixty-five.
One sixty-five.
Well, it's almost half.
Five out of that, so.
Well, you, you went from, yeah, you went from a little over two hundred dollars down to one sixty-five, I mean, that's.
So that's why three hundred is not really that out of line.
No, if you look at the table, actually, three hundred is.
Pretty low.
Almost the lowest. There's a couple of, like Hillsborough and Woodside and Portola Valley that apparently have no compensation.
You know, and I'm always suspect of things like that because I'm not quite sure what question was asked. So when you're looking at things like that, I'm not quite sure what the total compensation is for those, for council members. Because although you may ask the question, how much do you make in salary? And, you know, we would say one sixty-five, and if we don't say, what do you get in auto allowance? So we, you know, you get three hundred dollars a month in auto allowance without asking Hillsborough that question, I don't know if their auto allowance is more than that.
Right, but putting that aside, the other cities, the net, the, the minimum aside from that is three hundred, so I think three hundred would certainly be reasonable.
And the sal, but, and the salary if it was compounded.
Right.
Is what?
Well, I think.
We haven't done that math.
I think it's like in the nine hundred range.
Right.
If it's not compounded, it's four hundred thirty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents per month.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should be compensated whatever the average is, you know, I mean, we all work hard, we're in a ton of hours, especially with all the subcommittees that that are on. Um, I mean, it's easy to put in ten. I mean, it's easy to put in ten, fifteen hours a week, you know, in, in this job. But, uh, you know, you don't do it for the money, obviously. You know, you do it because you care about the community. But, of course, e- when you know that other council members in other cities are making significantly more than what we are, that doesn't feel right either. So, I mean, something in, in the average, uh, pay scale seems appropriate. So then, is this something that we should bring back?
Right, well, you would direct, you would direct staff to bring something back.
Yeah.
And we'd have my, I'd work with Michael, or Michael would work with me to have something on your agenda.
I'm happy to have them bring it back and look at it. I don't think any of us will be, um-
Not gonna be bringing it back.
I don't think we'll be making minimum wage.
No.
I'm not sure we, we're making a legal wage.
We're not.
You're excluded. So you want me to talk to Michael about bringing back something that would say three hundred dollars per month?
I think, you know, for me, I'd like to see some kind of average amount, you know, just looking at some of those, uh, lists of cities that you had put forth and see what the-
I think Ray, your suggestion is to go to four thirty-seven or something like that?
Well, that's what we are allowed by just the, the straight five percent without the compound.
Uh-huh.
Um, and so, you know, Laura had noticed that Michael had made a mistake, and I did too, because-
Yeah.
He hasn't here as for twenty-three years.
It should be thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Right.
So, um, the four thirty-seven would be kind of the, the, you know, the max if we stick to the straight line. But I would say, you know, anywhere between, you know, three hundred and that, because there are a couple of cities that are three hundred. And then there are others, of course, who are more than that, but, you know, Colma, I think is just, I was quite surprised to see that.
Yeah, I know that's-
But even Pacifica is, I think, seven hundred, so-
I mean, as I said, you know, not knowing what's, not knowing what's in the detail.
And Daly City's fifteen hundred.
Yeah, but that's a, you know, much bigger place, so.
Not knowing what's in the detail of those-
Not that they work as hard as we do, yeah, their, their council meetings can be over in forty-five minutes, so.
Yes.
I've heard twenty.
That's stretching it.
Yeah.
Uh, you, you know, if you would like to do this prior to the election, what we could do is have this be one of the positions that our compensation person looks at. I mean, we still have it timed and done in time for the, before, prior to the election. And that way, you'd have somebody who professionally does compensation studies, we'd be able to give you a full understanding of what all the different cities get. And that might give you the information you need to make a, a well-informed decision.
Might as well.
If it doesn't increase the cost of the compensation study.
It would not, I mean, they, he said that they would do sixty-five positions. You know, we have, you know, we only have, he says he'd do up to sixty-five positions. We only have eight, eighty, yeah, I mean, we have like eighty full-time employees, of which, as you know, fourteen, you know, fourteen are police officers, nine are firefighters, kind of.
Okay, that makes sense.
So it would not inclu-, it would not increase that.
And would he look at the other benefits as well?
Yes.
Okay.
So that way you have a more full understanding of what you're looking at.
I think that's a more prudent way to do it.
Sounds good.
That's fine.
Yeah.
And you can choose whether to do it or not at that point.
Right, but it, we, you know, as you know, it's gonna be done enough time before your election.
Yeah, right. Good.
Thank you.
That was a good idea I had, Clay. That was a good idea I had. That's, I'm going.
Mm-hmm.
Wait, so we're-
Made it to eleven, but-
We made it to eleven, and we still have, uh, a lot of the work to do. So, um-
Well, the question is, do we wanna take a cut at it now, or do we wanna put it off till the eighteenth?
I think staff's gonna weigh in on that.
Yeah, you, um, I, I mean, that's, that's your call, but you're gonna have a fairly full agenda on the eighteenth, and, because that's the last meeting you have for a month. So it's gonna back up a little bit.
Okay. The only other possibility, if you wanted to, you know, hold off, and not, because we will probably be here for another hour or so, talking about different, um, recommendations and differences of opinion on some of these things, and so, and it's kinda late, so. The only person I feel sorry for is John, who came in special. So the only other thought, thought that I had, and, uh, to my colleagues and to the staff is, uh, you know, that if the sustainability framework conversation is not really long, then we might have time on, you know, the fifteenth. That's the only other thought that I had.
I don't know if we got great minds are thinking together or what, but-
But we also have- Are we meeting that, before that for-
We're meeting from seven to eight for the city attorney.
Attorney evaluation.
Well, I, I, I've got a suggestion, because we got a proposal from the subcommittee. Why don't we just start, um, tromping through that list? And, uh, um, looking at it, to me, what's gonna create the most conversation is Southeast Crocker Precise Plan and the-
True.
Community Development.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, um, maybe save that one for last. Not start out with it, so we don't bog down, you know what I mean? And then, uh, look at, uh, look at the stuff and, uh, Madam Mayor, if I could, I mean, this is arbitrarily, I, I, I'd like to start with the fiber optic consultant and public work.
Could, uh, yeah, I mean, I mean, it's okay with me if that's what you wanted to do. So it's up to everybody. But, um, I'd, I'd like to preface, uh, before we start talking about individual items, I'd like to preface it with how the, the subcommittee was thinking about it.
Yeah. Well, I, yeah, I thought that would be part of the, uh, conversation, but-
Right, but I think that should come first, I'd, in my, I would hope that we could, you know, at least give you an idea of the context, and then, then, then we get into the individual, uh-
Okay. So, I'll make a motion to extend the meeting till midnight.
You know, I, I hate to tell you this, but I've been fighting a migraine all night, and I don't think I'm gonna make it till midnight.
Eleven-thirty.
Sure.
I amend the motion to eleven.
Well, if we do it on Monday, the eighteenth, or sorry, Monday, the fifteenth, we could get to it by nine o'clock instead of eleven o'clock, right? If the sustainable, sustainability framework, framework only takes an hour.
No, absolutely not. I've been giving up my Mondays, and I have my movie nights with grandkids and stuff like that.
Or we have a meeting on Monday.
We do, yeah.
Yeah, we should, it'd just be, that's right.
No, no, yeah, it would just be after then.
That meeting, really, it's what it would be, because we're already gonna be here anyway.
Well, that's what Clay's saying, you got a crystal ball. Let's go to eleven-thirty and see where we're at, and then we'll probably go into Monday. Are you okay with that, Terry?
Well, I, I'm, I'm trying to work through it, but I don't think that at eleven o'clock at night, that we're gonna have our best discussion on items that are, um, things that we all have our feelings on. So, um, I, I'm just not sure it's the best idea to do. But, you know, if, and I, I don't know how many people are willing to make any concessions on what they want, or how serious- Ray, your pen is against the mic. You've got a little buddy-
We're all trying to figure out where it's come out.
Yeah. I was wondering, where's that noise coming from? Hey! What the heck's going on here, man? Ray's thinking what you-
Going to town. That's what happens when, uh, the lights go out, and we all leave.
Yeah.
Um, so, and I, and I think that besides just the items that we have on the list of projects that, um, we haven't agreed on or we're recommending taking off, I think that there's also other projects that, um, aren't funded at all, that are gonna require quite a bit of discussion, and where we're going to be comfortable with how much of a deficit budget we're, we're gonna be comfortable with. So I think there's some really big issues. And I personally know that I'm not in a good spot for this.
Okay.
And, I mean, I could excuse myself and let you guys discuss it.
Well, you're part of the subcommittee that proposed the reductions, and I don't think that'd be right for you to skip out on us here.
I think the fifteenth is, uh, is the best idea. And then we could start earlier, and we're fresh, and, and we're here anyway. So, so I won't be taking another Monday night.
Sorry, Laurie.
No, I, I'm fine with that.
I'm like tired of a meeting now, but, okay.
Well, we, we all have that moment, and, and like I said, if I wasn't physically fighting a migraine right now and taking the medications and not out at work, it's just, I can't focus on the numbers anymore. So.
Okay.
Okay.
It's not, that I'm just tired.
Okay, we can reset that, I think.
So-
Fifteenth, then, is at seven o'clock, is where we're gonna meet.
If I could ask-
When we have.
Yeah, you have-
Yeah, at seven.
Seven for personnel session, and then I think the meeting would start afterwards, or eight.
One, eight would be the sustainability.
And we have the sustainability framework, and then the budget.
How long, you guys are the subcommittee, how long do you think that the reg-
I, I, I mean, it, it's not great, but we, we, we would like to get, and I, I suppose it has more to do with the homework that the three of you need to do. Uh, because Cliff and I know this damn thing backwards and forwards. We've been working on it for, you know, three, four years, so-
What homework?
So what we-
Sustainability.
Need from the three of you is, is a buy-in, really. And, and the idea was that we would just go through the, you know, the key points and make sure that, uh, we're all on the same page, all five of us. So, um, how long it takes is really up to the three of you.
Should we do the budget first, maybe, and flip it?
We have a consultant that's gonna be joining us.
Never mind.
But it has to start at eight, because, um-
Right.
Wha- what's your thought on it? Staff, Clay?
I, my sense, um, you, you, on the sustainability plan, you did get some fairly, um, significant, or, I shouldn't say significant, you got a lot of comments from a couple of your committees, so it'll probably take a little bit of time to go through that. But I think the consultant is gonna kind of lead us through the discussion. The document is something I think has been, you, you've seen in various forms over a couple of year period of time now, so it's, it shouldn't be, you know, like, all new to you. Um, so my guess is that it's maybe an hour, hour and a half conversation, so you could be done by nine-thirty, and then maybe take a short break, and then get into the budget.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds-
I mean, the other thing, just throwing this out, I mean, if, if, well, that, forget it.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, no, I thi- I think the fifteenth will work.
No, I was, I was thinking, maybe you could start the meeting early, because I recognize where he's-
Or seven is the earliest I can start.
Yeah, yeah.
John, you been here all night? Sorry. I know we asked you to come back for this, and then, you know.
That's what I said, the only, the only problem I, that, that we had is poor, poor John. Apologies.
Well, he's refat- refreshed from, um, being on vacation.
Not now.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.